Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mr. Cameron.
President.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Beazle.
Here.
Mr. Peter.
Here.
Pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We consider the republic of which is theirs, one nation under God, equal and just, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. First thing on the agenda is a minute to the last meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'm with you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, it's time for visitors' communications. We have some badge pinings occurring tonight.
Yes, sir, we do.
Chief, if you would like to start the process. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you council members, thank you, Mr. Dell, Chief Bailey. This is always a fun night, as Chief Bailey and I always say in the past. If I could have Chris Carpenter and Adam Noe come up for now, I'd like to present them with their new badges. For Chris, it's going to be Lieutenant, and for Adam, it's going to be Sergeant. Lieutenant Carpenter's new number will be forty-two-eleven, and Adam Noe's new number will be forty-three-sixteen. Just a few things about both guys. Don't get your... First of all, we started the promotional process back in the fall of 2017, and as we all know here in the city of Fort Thomas, it's a very competitive process because a lot of people do not leave the fire department or the police department, which is a great thing for the city because it's so amazing. With that said, sometimes promotions, you know, they distance themselves where they don't take place all the time. But obviously, when Lieutenant Gonzalez retired, it obviously opened up some positions for Lieutenant and Sergeant, which is nice because that allows the department to grow and give guys opportunities, which always is a good thing. And with that said, we had a written exam, a peer evaluation, we went through the interview process with the safety committee, and we also had that little percentage for seniority for how many years you guys had on. But for the Lieutenant process and the Sergeant process, both of them were very, very competitive, as we expected. Several applicants went for the Sergeant's process, and obviously, the three Sergeants went for the Lieutenant's process. And it's exactly like we called it before we knew the scores even came in. Lieutenant's process was extremely close, and the Sergeant's process was extremely close. And obviously, I'm proud of Adam and Chris, but I'm also proud of all the guys that took the Sergeant's test and the Lieutenant's test and just performed very well throughout the whole process, as we saw during the interviews, which was nice. Real quick on Chris. He's been with the department since, gosh, 2001, right before nine eleven occurred, actually. Chris has done an amazing job in his career here at the police department. He was promoted to Sergeant on September seventeenth of 2007. He has been on the SWAT team for many, many years. He's obviously one of the leaders on the SWAT team, as is Officer Bryant for one of the other SWAT team units. Chris has been our firearms instructor for years, and also our defensive tactics guy for years. And I tell you, when he leaves, and when Doug Bryant leaves, we're going to have a hard time replacing those kind of guys on the range because their skill level has made our police department one of the better departments with our shooting skills in the area of Northern Kentucky, greater Cincinnati. For Adam, though, he came from the city of Bellevue. He started his career at EKU back in two thousand and two-one, another two thousand and one. Adam, when he came to our department in two thousand and twelve, he quickly moved up, very quickly, to investigations and became one of our detectives. From the time he got into that office, he really, really performed well in that position and did an amazing job. And just like it's hard to replace guys like Chris at the range in defensive tactics, it's hard to replace guys like Adam Noe when it comes to investigations. You just don't find guys like this that perform so well and represent the city of Fort Thomas so well. Adam's also on the crime scene team for Northern Kentucky. He does keep busy with that from time to time. Obviously, we do a partnership within Campbell County, and we work together. With that said, we'd like to present them with their new badges, but kind of the tradition now has become where the families can come on up, and I'll let you guys do the pinning. You've just got to make sure you don't poke them. Carpenter, girl, what do you think? Huh? And I'll let you guys take it away.
I was waiting for that.
I want you guys to have a few minutes to introduce your family. I want you guys to take it over. Since Sergeant goes first, right? I just want to extend a big thanks to all you guys who were on the committee and I had the chance to interview with. I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. We've already hit the ground running, Lieutenant Carpenter and I have. We're both assigned a third shift, so we're really excited about it. Chris and I have known each other for quite a while now, so I think we're going to work together really well and have one head of a shift, I think, so looking forward to it. Tonight, I got my wife Tiffany, Alex the Red here, Jackson the Wild Man. I've got my mom, my dad, his girlfriend Holly, and I think that's it. So, thank you guys for the opportunity, and I look forward to it.
Thank you, thank you.
Likewise, I've got my mom and dad there in the back, and my wife and my four daughters, and my wife knows their names and all that good stuff. Many years ago, seventeen years ago, you guys took a chance and scraped the bottom of the barrel. You guys took six off that list. I was sixth on the list, had a wild degree of no qualification whatsoever for policing, so you guys took a big chance, and I appreciate the city and all the opportunities you guys are giving me. And you guys don't get to see my family much because we obviously don't promote them around here, but they appreciate all the life you've given us and why you allowed us to take care of each other. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it. And you know, we are very blessed with a great fire department and a great police department in the city of Fort Thomas, again, ranked safest city in Kentucky. And it's for people like you all that give your careers and your lives to the city, and we truly appreciate that, so.
Can I have one more opportunity?
Yes, please do.
We'd like, like Kalen did when he came back from the police academy, you know, Ron came up with a good idea, and we talked about it, about sometimes when guys come back from the academy, you never see them again.
Right.
Sometimes they go to third shift, and they may be on third shift for eight years, and you don't get that opportunity. Officer Palucci is with us tonight. He's been on the road, what, five or four?
This will be week four.
Four. He's going to come up and talk about his experience at the academy, and I just want to let you guys know Joe is doing an amazing job in FTO program. All the reports coming out from the field training officers is nothing but excellent.
Excellent, excellent.
I'd just like to thank you guys again, I appreciate the opportunity. My time in the academy was great, I had a lot of fun, I learned a lot of great things, met a lot of great people that I'll be friends with them for the rest of my life. But some things I really liked a lot about the academy was I loved the, all the training we got. They really took their time, they taught us great tactics, they taught us everything we needed to know as far as legality-wise, which always wasn't the most fun, but definitely needed to know. And the driving, the instructors really cared about you, and especially the defensive tactic ones, they definitely made sure you were good to go, and it was just overall a great experience. I love an FTO, it's been a lot of fun. All the guys up here are great, they'll help you out with anything you need, and it's been a lot of fun. I'm just extremely blessed that you guys gave me this opportunity, and I really appreciate it.
Great, thank you so much, and congratulations, and look forward to a long career here.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, true, thank you, Mayor.
Again, thank you all very much. This has been, this has been fun going through this process here.
And this young man made three arrests the other night.
Did he really?
Took three people to jail.
That's correct.
One night, one shift.
What a way to start. That's good. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right. Again, we're still in visitors' communications. Is there anybody else who would like to address council tonight for any purpose? If not, we will move along with our agenda. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can get up and leave if you'd like, it doesn't matter. You can stay for a while and pull out later if you'd like to. Totally up to you. So we are going to go down to reports of officers, so Fire Department Monthly Report. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, members of council. Really have nothing to add to the January monthly report that was mailed out in your packet, so would like to mention we too are in, as Chief Bailey mentioned, we too are in the middle of a process of doing a promotional, the promotional process, and we've got oral interviews tomorrow, and so we look forward to that. We have no openings, but obviously, we set that list per the contract on an every-two-year basis, so it'll be set in case somebody does decide to retire. We've got it in place. So, you know, like Chief Bailey said, again, it's an important process and a fun one to go through with our department, and so very proud of, again, our department, as I mentioned to you a number of times through the year. But January, the normal starting-of-the-year scenario, not a lot there, but if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to field them, and we're heading to, again, some busy months ahead of us, I'm sure.
Questions for the chief? Matt, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm with the receiving side.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Chief. Police Department Monthly Report. Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Haas, thank you council members. I just have a few items I just wanted to touch base on that's in the report itself. Obviously, on the front cover, under Personnel, just an update, Kalen's only a few weeks away from being on his own. He will be on the second shift once he gets out of the FTO program, and Kalen's doing an amazing job, as well as Joe's doing an amazing job. So, we got two great hires in both guys, so it's nice for the city. Secondly, I wanted to go to the third page. Director Connors from the Strike Force shared some information recently at the end of the year regarding heroin overdoses by county. It covers, obviously, greater Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky. I think it's got some interesting numbers, and these are actual true numbers that came from Director Connors. Sometimes the numbers you see out there are not always the true numbers, but these are actually pretty well spot-on, so if you get a chance, take a peek at it. Obviously, you know, for Campbell County, we're up twenty-five percent, so, you know, there's been comments that the heroin issue has gone away, we're seeing positive things, but we're still seeing a lot of issues with the heroin problem, and it's going to keep a hold on us for a long time. We've just got to keep working together. Also, on the second page, we're going to be partnering with the DEA coming up in April. It's called the Fifteenth National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. It's going to be on Saturday, April twenty-eighth of this year, from ten a.m. to two p.m. I have assigned Officer Donnell into that, so basically, we will keep the front lobby open for our citizens here in Fort Thomas and whomever else from other cities, and they will be able to come in, obviously, to meet Sean and turn in any unwanted prescription drugs that they may have at their house. This program is very successful, it really works well, and we're excited to be able to offer it to the community. And lastly, I just wanted to touch a little bit on a new position, and I'm not going to get into a lot about it, because coming up here in a few months, we'll start to show more data and statistics of what's coming from this position, but we created a traffic officer position. Mr. Dell and I had much discussion on this idea. We felt like it was a win-win positive for the city of Fort Thomas, and from looking at the data from January, Officer Hoffman was the one assigned to this position, and Nick is doing an amazing job with this position. And looking at his numbers from January sixth to the end of the year, month, his numbers are really, really good, especially getting out into the problem areas of the Fort Thomas area, because we've been inundated with traffic issues like speeding or stop sign violations, things like that, even heroin, the issue of people driving recklessly when they've obviously taken the drug as they enter from Cincinnati back over into Kentucky into Fort Thomas. So, Nick is, he's very proactive, very positive, and we're lucky to have him in this position. But March, we're going to be putting some numbers together, and we will present that kind of like in a report to kind of show everybody where we're at and how effective it really truly is, kind of like the investigation report. It's going to kind of be geared around that, but Nick is the one working on that. And that's all I have. If there's any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Yeah, Chief, when you mentioned the, these deaths by county, you made a comment that feeling like the heroin problem might be getting better. What is our police force doing out there? Is it getting better in our area, or is it getting worse? Is it about the same? Are you seeing any of these things that are out there making an improvement?
Well, I think the fire department and the police department here in Fort Thomas are still seeing the issue that we have seen in the last five years. Yes, I think there has been improvements, and there has been progress because a lot of people in different jobs, like the hospitals, the schools, police, fire, have all come together, and yeah, it is going in a positive direction.
Good.
But we have to keep working hard, all of us.
Absolutely.
You know, it takes every one of us to try to get rid of this, this issue. I mean, back in the eighties and nineties, we had the cocaine issue. And obviously, sad to say, we're having this issue, which is affecting a lot, a lot of people.
I'm just glad to hear you say that you're seeing some positive results.
Yes.
Because I know there's been a lot of people trying to work on the problems.
Yes.
And it's always really frustrating when you hear about a problem and it seems to get worse rather than get better, so I'm glad to see.
Well, I...
And I realize it's not over, and it's going to be there for a while, but we...
And our legislators and senators locally, you know, in Northern Kentucky are doing a fantastic job, down in Frankfurt, obviously, you know, talking about it, trying to work together, so there has been a lot of positive progress, don't you think, Chief Bailey?
Yeah, I believe.
Good.
We've come a long way.
Got a long way to go.
Good.
We've just got to keep going in that direction.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, City Administrator's Report.
Okay. I just have a couple of things to update on the vision and community plan. Thank everyone for being there with their group. We had a great attendance, had a lot of positive feedback. Our facilitators, consultants, were very excited about the type of feedback they received from our, I don't know what to call it here, open house. So it generated a lot more interest of citizen involvement, which is part of the process. The committees have kind of shifted and pivoted to the exploration phase. A couple of the committees have met since that date, and I think most of them are scheduled or pending a, you know, next meeting in the next couple of weeks. And they, I think almost every committee has increased in participation.
Oh, that's great.
Based off of that open house meeting that we had. So that's pretty exciting. There's a lot of momentum, a lot of discussion in the community, so we're excited to keep going forward with that. I just wanted to mention, I meant to mention this at the last meeting, but Alexander Circle is the name of the project. So everybody here and everybody out there, please help me change that to Alexander Circle moving forward instead of the VA Homes. They are no longer the VA Homes. The city of Fort Thomas owns the homes. We have a developer, and they are marketing it as Alexander Circle, which of course is the name of the street existing, but they're doing a great job at the outset. They have hired their marketing people and their brokers for sales. The project's moving forward. The city has been engaged in conversation with all the utility companies. Our last meeting is scheduled for next week with SD One. They are in the process then of moving forward with their Stage Two development plan, so they will have their engineers presenting in the next sixty days to our planning commission with their final plans that includes all the utility layout. So that's their schedule moving forward. Their financing is falling in place. At the last council meeting, we approved an agreement for sale, so they'll be coming back to us for an actual consummation of that deal. So everything seems to be falling in place. They're very excited. They did appear, I think I mentioned at the last meeting before our design review board, had a very positive meeting with them. They're on target with a lot of the key elements of the preservation and restoration aspects of the job, so they're ready to kind of kick off. This is a teaser weather, by the way, so they'll kick off when the weather really changes. So we expect to see them up there, you know, sometime in the spring or late spring, working on site, so that's exciting. So remember that, it's Alexander Circle, and if I don't use that nomenclature, please correct me.
Do you know if the plans are to do somewhere, I read that there might be like five focused on, and then they would be, you know, like a section of five and then move on to another?
Yes. Part of the structure of their financing is that they will do all the site work and also be doing five renovations at a time.
Right.
And that's just the structuring and their financing that would allow that. So I think they've identified the buildings that they will be doing first, and they have, I won't steal any of their thunder, but they have a lot of interest already in potential buyers, so.
Yep.
They don't own it yet, but they're already marketing it, and they have good input, so... But yes, they'll be doing five initially.
What about the lawnmowers, the new construction?
They are not moving forward with that initially, at least at this point, that's not in their first phase, so I'm not sure where that fits in their schematic of completion. With their Stage Two plan, they will submit a schedule of development, so at that time we'll have a little better pin down.
They, yeah, cited fifteen units, so I guess the two families will remain.
Right, there's ten structures existing on site, five are duplexes and five are single-family.
Right.
And then they have the option for the sixteenth, which is the vacant lot.
Right.
Okay, moving on, just a couple of other projects, just updating. We had a pre-construction meeting on the Barrett Ridge project with Smith Construction, and they are ready to proceed sooner than later, which is good. So they're working on all their insurance papers and bonding and moving forward. That project will start really as soon as the weather breaks, so when they get a window of opportunity, they're going to start that project. The mess hall armory renovation, the tuck pointing, the new roof on the mess hall building, the bids are out, that'll be advertised tomorrow, and they are due on three thirteen. After much debate, it's a Friday the thirteenth, we took it anyway, so we'll have bids opening on three thirteen for that project, and those are together. Those two projects are together, those two buildings. So they'll be presented at your next council meeting, and I think that's all I had as far as update. Really no legislative news. You all probably hear what I hear right now. They're still spinning wheels in Frankfurt as far as anything related to the city. I have not brought forward kind of the cost estimates for discussion because quite frankly, that'll probably all change before it becomes real, so we just kind of held off on that conversation, and obviously, we'll be entering our budget process starting in March, so at the close of legislative session, we'll know more of those factors that'll go into our budget. That's all I have.
Good, all right, thank you. All right, is there any more business? We have new business, the consideration of the 2018 street resurfacing program.
I can address that.
Okay, please.
Okay, Honorable Mayor and Board of Counsel, we, the undersigned members of the Public Works Committee of Council, hereby report that a public hearing was conducted on Thursday, February eighth, twenty eighteen, regarding the city's proposed 2018 street program. The 2018 street program consists of the complete reconstruction of the following streets, David Drive, Pentland Place, and Sabre Court. Committee members and staff conducted the hearing, which was attended by three residents and property owners, two of which addressed the committee. Twenty-eight of the properties are being assessed, so approximately seven percent of the affected owners spoke at the public hearing. There was full support for the proposed improvements outlined within the attached engineers comprehensive report. Residents that addressed the committee expressed concerns over speeding on Pentland Place and the potential for increased speeding upon completion. The committee members and staff discussed design options that may assist with speeding concerns. It was agreed that pumpouts be designed and included in the project where feasible, including the intersection of Highland Avenue and at Sabre Court. Based upon the results of the public hearing of the Public Works Committee of Council, hereby recommend the city proceed with the street resurfacing improvements as proposed, and that the Board of Counsel authorize the first reading of the ordinance acknowledging the city's intent to proceed with the project.
Wow, three people. That's the lowest ever.
Yeah. It was positive, and I felt really good about us continuing the dialogue after the meeting was over and coming up with some resolution.
That was, that was impressive.
Yeah.
Because we took feedback directly from the agents that came.
Yeah.
And the committee met and discussed and came up with options on the spot, and they're being implemented, which is great.
That's, that's great, that's great. So I assume that there's only three people. Obviously, it's basically one street with the arteries there. Compared to other years where we have a lot more streets.
Right.
But I assume that people knew about it because they got notice and they felt comfortable with what was happening, and they didn't show up. That's, that's amazing. That's really good. All right, so we need to take action on this, or is that down below?
We have an intent to proceed ordinance, so you'll take action on that. You can accept the report.
Oh, accept the report, okay, I'll do that.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, consideration of agreement between the city of Fort Thomas and Northern Kentucky Water District.
You had a copy in your packet for an interlocal agreement between the city and the water district. The, anytime that there's a shared project, we've done similar interlocal agreement with SD One, it requires an interlocal agreement be approved by council and submitted to the Attorney General's Office in Frankfurt and put on record. So what you have here is a pretty standard instrument in terms of the interlocal agreement. Jan's had an opportunity to look at it. This is really kind of putting in place the next step, the Alexander Circle, I got that right? The Alexander Circle project will have a shared portion of that project will be between the city and the water district. The water management placement from South Fort Thomas Avenue all the way into the project. Of course, by agreement, those costs will be put back into the development cost and paid by the developer. However, we are working directly with the water district through this interlocal agreement. So it's really just getting that on record. You'll note that it was valid through, forgive me, twenty thirty-four. Page, get that on. Twenty thirty-five, I'm sorry, on page two at the very top. And essentially, what that means is the interlocal agreement will stay in place for that period of time, so I asked them about the magic of that date, and really, it just comes down to the water district puts all there with every city and other entity at twenty thirty-five, so they don't have to chase an expiration date for different entities, so it's basically on file. So it's, it's basically on file for that period of time, if there was any question on that. So, just requires action of council.
All right. Entertain motion. Anybody else has any questions? Like, what are we talking about?
I'd just like to state that we do legal work for the Northern Kentucky Water District.
Uh-oh.
As a result of that, as, as happened in the past, I'd like Director Sheller to recuse myself from this discussion, and I will not be voting.
Okay. So noted. All right, entertain motion from somebody else now.
I'd move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, question? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee report on dispersments.
Report of dispersments, January 17th through February 16th, 2018. General Fund, $260,375.34. Power Park Fund, $1,348.70. Public Works KDOT Fund, $12,506.30. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $2,281.76. CBD Revitalization, $16,995.47. Waste Fees, $90,569.20. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,871.23. Total, $385,647.55. We the undersigned members of the Finance Committee recommend that warrants number 3321 through, through 3470 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, Chairperson, Ms. Kelly member, Mr. Beazle member.
Take a motion.
I'd concur.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peter?
Aye.
Can I ask a question? How bad, do we know how long the CBD debt service has got, continued, how many years?
Joe, why don't you answer?
He's not here.
She asked that today, when he's not here. Where is Joe, by the way?
He's out of town.
He's out of town, on vacation.
Never mind.
Do you know the answer?
I do not know the answer to that.
Joe will.
Yeah, I mean, we have it in our, our budget documents, but I'd rather call, because there's several of them, but they expire on a different year, so, yeah.
So remember that question for next time. All right, down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Ordinance 001, 2018.
Ordinance number 001, 2018, an ordinance confirming the engineer's estimate of the cost of the improvement and certificate of apportionment for the improvement of Custis Avenue from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its intersection with Alexandria Pike, Diana Court from its intersection with Hyview Drive to its terminus, Hyview Drive from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its terminus, Lafayette Court from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its terminus, Lilac Lane from its intersection with Hyview Drive to its intersection with Newman Avenue, and Washington Avenue from its intersection with Highland Avenue to the city's corporate foundry with the city of Newport being Joyce Avenue. All in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereto, as submitted by the city engineer and is approved by the Board of Council, approving and levying a special assessment against the abutting property owners and providing for its payment, directing the city clerk to publish an abstract of this ordinance, and directing the city treasurer to prepare and distribute the assessment bills requiring all abutting property owners to pay the improvement assessment. That special assessment rates are set out below per linear foot, and fronting unlisted streets are assessed against said real estate and the owners of their, and the owners thereof at the stated cost per foot. Custis Avenue, $9.64, total cost $19.28. Diana Court, $8.03, total cost $16.06. Hyview Drive, $9, total cost $18. Lafayette Court, $6.93, total cost $13.86. Lilac Lane, $9.40, total cost $18.80. Washington Avenue, $9.74, total cost $19.48.
All right. Need a motion for that?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Be, Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peter?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Ordinance 02, 2018.
Ordinance number 02, 2018, an ordinance establishing the rates of pay of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, fire department employees who are members of IAFF Local 1928 for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year, and fixing the manner of paying such compensation. The hourly rate of pay of the officers and the regular firefighters of the fire department are stated for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. Employees will be paid at the hourly rate for the first 40 hours of work each week and one half, one half, one and a half times that rate for additional hours of work each week. In the event of a need for overtime because, because of an emergency, sickness, or other unforeseen conditions, the hourly rates are fixed. In the event of a need for a 24-hour overtime shift, the rates are stated. The work week shall be defined as beginning at 7:30 AM on Sunday and continuing until Sunday, Sunday at 7:30 AM.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peter?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you. Ordinance 03.
Ordinance number 03, 2018, an ordinance providing for and ordering the street improvement of David Drive from its intersection with Saber Court to its terminus, Pentland Place from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its intersection with Brand Avenue, Saber Court from its intersection with David Drive to its intersection with Pentland Place, all in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereof, as submitted by the city engineer and as approved by the Board of Council of the city of Fort Thomas, and further providing that the actual cost of the construction of said street improvements are to be borne by the city 50% and the property owner 50%, with the exception of Pentland Place where street improvement costs for the city's typical section are to be borne by the city 60% and the property owner 40%, and providing for the payment of an improvement assessment. The city shall proceed with the street improvements as designed for David Drive, Pentland Place, and Saber Court. Costs for street improvements shall be shared on a 50% to the city and 50% to the property owner basis, with the exception of Pentland Place where street improvement shall be shared on a 60% to the city and 40% to the property owner basis. David Drive, total preliminary cost estimate $57,500, is $10.07 per front foot. Pentland Place, the preliminary cost estimate is $515,000. Owner share is $12.05. And Saber Court, preliminary cost $57,500, and owner share is $11.41.
Excuse me, that's a phrase. I noticed that the, the actual cost was quite a bit lower than the estimates, you know, for all the just approved. Is that, is that typical, or?
No, I don't think there were more. I think there were a lot.
That's what I said, quite a bit lower.
Typically, they are.
The actual payments were quite a bit lower than...
Correct. They are, and, and they're based off engineer estimate, and I'm glad you brought that up, because the point to be made on this project is that's based off an equivalent overlay, and because it's a reconstruction, that is actual.
Okay.
Because there will be no bid that reflects a resurfacing.
Okay.
Because it's a reconstruction. So when we do those projects, that cost is fixed based off the engineer's estimate.
Okay.
But it obviously does not include the total reconstruction cost, that's the equivalent cost.
Right.
So, but yes, it's pretty typical, just depends on the scope of the project and the competitiveness of the bids, but most of the time, they're a little bit lower, and collectively, they are less than our engineer's estimate, so we're, we're a little conservative with our engineer estimates typically.
So with these complete rebuilds, I guess maintaining traffic is a challenge?
Yes. The intention here is, is that one lane will be maintained at all times for future traffic, so.
Yeah, but when I grew up, when I was a kid, that road wasn't even mine, so we managed it, so. We could do that again. We could use, what is it, Wilders?
It will, Wilders is the other connecting street, but the, the hope is that it's not directing a lot of traffic to Wilders, but it will be maintaining some traffic, so it won't be closed completely at any point in time. And that's also a wider street, so the intention is hopefully, because it has a parking lane on both sides, that we'll be able to really maintain two-way traffic, with just some interruption during the day during construction.
All right, now to municipal orders. MO 01.
Municipal order, MO 01, 2018, a municipal order reappointing Barb Manette as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Okay, municipal order 02.
Municipal order 18, 2018, a municipal order reappointing Joey Hood as a member of the Fort Thomas Street Commission for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
Another motion, please.
Move through. Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.